Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 7th, the year is 2001. It is about 10:25 a.m. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday as close to 10 a.m. As we can achieve a quorum. We can be viewed also on L.A. City View Channel 35, or heard via council phone, or watched via webcast through the city's homepage. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, and Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla, 11 members present, and in corner, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Burnson moves. Mr. Holden seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Ms. Miskowski seconds.
Now is the time for invocation. Colleagues had asked that everybody stand, and please welcome Mr. Rabbi Stuart Vogel.
On June 30th, it was my pleasure to offer the invocation, the swearing-in ceremony of Dennis Zine, newly-elected council member of my district. Particularly impressive was the attendance by a number of the council members who are here. This demonstration of support is very important. It's a symbol to the people of what politics should be about. Politics should be nonpartisan, because it's the nature of human beings. We care about issues. We care about people. Political allegiance, partisan politics, is born out of a desire for power, personal gain, not the best interests of the people. I'm proud to be from a district whose council members have understood this and have led by personal example and partnerships. Councilmember Zine follows tradition of people like Joy Picas and Laura Chick, who have served our community with pride. Our country is sorely in need of leaders like these, who model the words of the Jewish sage, "If I'm not for myself, who will be for me? But if I'm only for myself, what am I?" Acknowledging that elected officials have an obligation, not only to their constituents, but to society at large. During this time of year, the Jewish people read from the final book of the Torah, Deuteronomy. The generation that is about to enter the land, and Moses speaks to them. Moses himself will not enter. What sin could he have committed that he would not enter this land? He who brought them out of Egypt, who stood up to Pharaoh, who led them for 40 years, according to one tradition, it is because Moses no longer saw himself as a partner, either with God or with the people. He took credit for miracles that God had wrought, and he called the people rebellious children. He could no longer form the effective partnerships necessary to lead them into the promised land. And so, we offer a prayer. Almighty God, may the partnerships forged in this chamber be for the good of society, and inspire all people to join together in one large partnership of humanity. May these elected officials serve by personal example. Remember that we are all partners in the pursuit of a just and righteous world. Eternal Creator of life, bestow upon them your divine wisdom, the ability to learn from others, so that they may be worthy of their position, and to understand that we are all made in your image. And finally, give them the strength and patience necessary to achieve their lofty and ambitious goals, and let us all say, "Amen."
Thank you very much. Mr. Wax, for an introduction.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, before we begin our session this morning, I know we have a lot of important items. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce 30 very special constituents who are visiting us today. They are 30 seniors from the Valley Cities Jewish Community Center, Current Events Discussion Group. They have been studying their government. They have a keen interest in what happens in City Hall. They're here today with our good friend Leonard Shapiro, and I wonder if the seniors from the Valley Cities Jewish Community Center would just stand and be recognized by the council. We're very, very happy to have you with us today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Colleagues, as you know, Fridays is our traditional day for presentations, resolutions, and other special recognitions. But today, I believe we have a special occasion, and I'd like to recognize Ms. Perry for her presentation.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 7th. The year is 2001. It is about 10:25 a.m. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday as close to 10 a.m. as we can achieve a quorum. We can be viewed also on L.A. City View, Channel 35, or heard via council phone, or watched via webcast through the city's homepage. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, and Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Sine, and Padilla, 11 members present, and in corner, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Burnson moves. Mr. Holden seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Ms. Miskowski seconds. Now is the time for invocation. Colleagues had asked that everybody stand, and please welcome Mr. Rabbi Stuart Vogel.
On June 30th, it was my pleasure to offer the invocation, the swearing-in ceremony of Dennis Zine, newly-elected council member of my district. Particularly impressive was the attendance by a number of the council members who are here. This demonstration of support is very important. It's a symbol to the people of what politics should be about. Politics should be nonpartisan, because it's the nature of human beings. We care about issues. We care about people. Political allegiance, partisan politics is born out of a desire for power, personal gain, not the best interest of the people. I'm proud to be from a district whose council members have understood this and have led by personal example and partnerships. Councilmember Zine follows tradition of people like Joy Picas and Laura Chick, who have served our community with pride. Our country is sorely in need of leaders like these, who model the words of the Jewish sage, "If I'm not for myself, who will be for me? But if I'm only for myself, what am I?" Acknowledging that elected officials have an obligation, not only to their constituents, but to society at large. During this time of year, the Jewish people read from the final book of the Torah, Deuteronomy. The generation that is about to enter the land, and Moses speaks to them. Moses himself will not enter. What sin could he have committed that he would not enter this land? He who brought them out of Egypt, who stood up to Pharaoh, who led them for 40 years, according to one tradition, it is because Moses no longer saw himself as a partner, either with God or with the people. He took credit for miracles that God had wrought, and he called the people rebellious children. He could no longer form the effective partnerships necessary to lead them into the promised land. And so, we offer a prayer. Almighty God, may the partnerships forged in this chamber be for the good of society, and inspire all people to join together in one large partnership of humanity. May these elected officials serve by personal example. Remember that we are all partners in the pursuit of a just and righteous world. Eternal Creator of life, bestow upon them your divine wisdom, the ability to learn from others, so that they may be worthy of their position, and to understand that we are all made in your image. And finally, give them the strength and patience necessary to achieve their lofty and ambitious goals, and let us all say, amen.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wax, for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, before we begin our session this morning, I know we have a lot of important items. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce 30 very special constituents who are visiting us today. They are 30 seniors from the Valley Cities Jewish Community Center, Current Events Discussion Group. They have been studying their government. They have a keen interest in what happens in City Hall. They're here today with our good friend Leonard Shapiro, and I wonder if the seniors from the Valley Cities Jewish Community Center would just stand and be recognized by the council. We're very, very happy to have you with us today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Colleagues, as you know, Fridays is our traditional day for presentations, resolutions, and other special recognitions. But today, I believe we have a special occasion, and I'd like to recognize Ms. Perry for a presentation.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmembers, I'm very pleased to welcome today the Queen and her court for the 2001 Nisei Week Festival, celebrated for 60-plus years in the Little Tokyo community. Standing next to me is Frances Hashimoto, a small-business owner, entrepreneur, and just a powerhouse, and unlimited energy. She is a mover, a shaker, and never stops, and has been a primary organizer for the Nisei Week Festival, along with so many others. And she's brought with us, the Queen and her court, women who are not only beautiful, but they are intelligent, and they love their community, and give back to their community, and are role models for young women, and women who are not young everywhere. So I'd like to have Frances say a few words before we introduce the Queen and her court about the festival.
Distinguished members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here today. We were very happy, on Sunday, Nisei Week, or on Saturday, we had our coronation ball, and our queen and court were selected, and we were very happy with the parade yesterday, but all these, the day before yesterday. But we would really like to thank you for your support, because that is what makes Nisei Week successful, and we're celebrating our 61st anniversary. And it's through the participation of our council member and all of you that support our festival, so we thank you very much.
And with that, I would like to introduce our queen, Lauren Hanako Kincaid. And I'll... Stand there a second. I'll introduce the entire court, and then ask Lauren to say a few words. Sylvia Masami Yoshimizu, First Princess. Cindy Kyoko Iwami, Miss Tomodachi. Aikiko Hatori, Princess. Michelle Yoshiku Moy, Princess. And Nori Akiku Nakase, Princess. Lauren's going to say a few words.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, on behalf of the 2001 Nisei Week Court, I'd like to extend our appreciation for your invitation to us today, to be here today, and also for these beautiful certificates. We really do appreciate it. And to Councilwoman Perry, we congratulate you on your new position, and we have every confidence that you'll do a great job. Also, we do have some booklets that we would like to present to the council, so given the opportunity, we will pass those out. And again, we thank you for your continued support of Little Tokyo and of Nisei Week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Members of the council, we've had a request to take public comment now, if there's no objection to that. We'll go ahead and call forward members of the public who have submitted cards. We have quite a number, so I will ask each of you to limit yourself to about two minutes. And let's go ahead and begin. I will call them in the order that they were received. First, we have Michael Saintem. Is Mr. Saintem present? Come forward, please, to the microphone in the center.
Can I make a comment before they get started, so I put in context?
Okay. Mr. Saintem, if you could wait for just a moment, I've had a request from Councilmember Perry to speak first, to address the public comment issue. Councilmember, we've recognized Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. I wanted to make two very quick statements to put this in context. Since the committee appointments were made, I believe that many of the council offices, including eight, nine, and 10, have received numerous phone calls from community-based organizations, affordable housing developers, community activists, block club people, religious leaders who engage in economic development activities of their concern about representation on key committees that administer grants for housing and economic development. I wanted to put this in context before the discussion takes place, and I just would like to put this on the record for your consideration. As a newly-elected councilperson to the 9th District, I pledge to support all the constituents that I represent, and I am seeking to allocate resources for economic development and grant funds for housing in my underserved communities. And I was elected to bring a fair share of employment and business opportunities to my community. This was my mandate and vision on which I was elected. The 9th District is rich in hope, energy, and diversity. I also want the 9th District to be rich in resources. The people of my district elected me to fight for them, and to be the tool to bring them jobs, so that they can buy their homes and send their children to college. They deserve the American dream, and I am here to be their voice. Como la nueva elegida concejal de novena distrito, yo prometi apoyar a todos los miembros de la comunidad que represento. Yo quiero luchar por los recursos económicos y fondos para viviendas en nuestra comunidad de bajos recursos. Yo también promete luchar por oportunidades de trabajo y negocios. Yo fui elegida por esta visión. El noveno distrito está enriquecido en esperanza y diversidad. También quiero que sea rica en recursos. La comunidad de novena distrito merecen trabajos que les den la oportunidad de comprar sus casas y que mandan a sus hijos a la universidad. Ellos merecen el sueño americano, y yo soy su voz. Gracias. Okay, so please...
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. And thank you. Mr. Saintem, you can begin.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Michael H. Saintem. As far as I remember, I know the Constitution gave me the right, the freedom of speech and freedom of association. I find that there are several members within the Police Department and City Council who are spreading innuendo about me. They don't know me that well. I believe that I explain in this letter I will submit to you. I'm a law-abiding, God-fearing, upstanding citizen of the United States. I am not a mad bomber. I'm not a drug dealer. I'm not a drug addict. And just because you don't like the things that I say, doesn't mean that you have to destroy my character. I take an educated decision on several issues that you are aware of. I don't agree that you should set out to destroy my character. Another thing about L.A. Police Department, you need to, City Council, need to do something about the L.A. Police Department, because you have police officers who are totally disrespectful to the citizens of L.A. And the attitude you get from the L.A. Police Department is if they are the unimpotence of everything, and they never listen to you, never do the right thing, never follow the rules and regulations, never let your personal opinion affect your personal judgment.
Mr. Saintem, we have a number of other people who would like to speak, so I'd like to ask you to conclude and give your letter to the Sergeant at Arms, so it can be distributed.
Okay. I have very much to say, but I'll come back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to call two, three people in order, so you can line up and make this a little more efficient. Helen Ann Johnson, Pamela Bazell, and Peggy Hill, and Leonard Jackson.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm here because I'm very worried about the committees and how they were issued and given. And I just have about three questions that I would like to ask the President. I would like to ask him, how did he decide to give certain members different committees? And I'd like to know who is over the 14th District, and what committee was he issued? I'd like to know why were the three black councilmembers were omitted where it's really needed to have somebody in those areas that know those areas? And why did you give it to people that is not familiar with the areas where we live? I have a big problem with that. We are here, as you see, in big numbers, and we are not here to have a party. We are here because we are very upset and very concerned. And I would like for the President to please answer me the question about who is over the 14th District, and why was he given this financial part, when we need housing so badly out there? But we do need somebody that is there to represent us and to know who we are and what we're about.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Pamela Bazell?
Good morning. I represent Vermont's Lawson Economic Development Corporation, who is a nonprofit in South Central Los Angeles. And our councilpeople, Councilwoman Jan Perry and Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas, represent our area. And we are in dire need of housing, social services, and economic development, and we would like to see our councilpeople represented on these very important committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Hill and Leonard Johnson-Jackson.
My name is Reverend Leonard Jackson, Associate Minister, First AME Church, here in Los Angeles, who is senior pastor, is Dr. Cecil Chip Murray, who cannot be here with us today, but would like to extend this message to you. Being one of the largest churches in the city, 17,000-plus members, we represent a large constituency of members here in this city. We'd like to make clear that we are here to continue to unify the city and not to pull the city apart. We reach out to, not only the committees here today, but we reach out to the City Council today to ask you, please, to open your minds, open your hearts, and continue to unite the city and not separate the city by your appointments to various committees.
I am Peggy Hill. I am the Executive Director for Fame Housing Corporation. Fame Housing Corporation is an affiliate of First AME Church. We are here today to ask for, we are here for a very specific reason, that you open up the opportunity for councilpersons such as Ridley Thomas, Jan Perry, Councilman Holden, to participate on these committees, in that we have elected them to represent the minority community. We ask that you think about it twice and give us some consideration. Also, we just, if, in that you've made the decisions that you have made, can you answer to us as to why? Why you made this decision? Because it doesn't have to be that way. We ask that you, that you take into consideration that we are here to continue what we've done in the past with these representatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speakers I will call forward, Connie Watson, Karen Bass, Tyrone Anthony Ray, Mark Lewis.
Good morning. My name is Connie Watson. I work for a nonprofit agency in South Los Angeles. Mr. Padilla was reported to have considered the backgrounds, strengths, areas of expertise, as well as interests of councilmembers in making committee appointments. If experience and intimate knowledge of the issues do not matter as much as loyalty, then this new so-called meaningful change in how city government operates will leave a large segment of the population of Los Angeles at a serious disadvantage. If one population suffers, the entire city will not prosper. If I or any other businessperson in this city, much less the nation, promoted a new and less experienced employee over a long-term experienced employee, we would be before the labor board in a heartbeat, and I would lose as an employer, because that's unfair labor practices. I may be a little naive, but I look to my leadership, such as yourselves, churches and so forth, to provide an example of best practices for me as a citizen and as an employer to follow. Now, I get disappointed a lot of the time, because that doesn't happen. This is real life, but I maintain the eternal hope that what is right and what makes sense will one day prevail over putting our individual agendas before the common good. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Bass?
Good morning. My name is Karen Bass. I'm the Executive Director of the Community Coalition. I'm here today to call on the Council President to correct a mistake. The mistake was in excluding council representation from South L.A. on key committees to address poverty. I want to call on the President to correct this mistake, but I'd also like to call on Councilman Wax, who's always been a friend to neighborhoods. And we recognize that you'll be leaving in a couple of months, and perhaps you could volunteer to step down from the committees. The rationale, as I understand it, for this decision, it was that it just worked out that way. Some have interpreted it as those who didn't support President Padilla were excluded, and that it wasn't meant to be geographic or racial. But you know, sometimes the decisions that we make can have unintended consequences. And the reality is, is that South L.A. is excluded. The reality is also that these committees address poverty issues in our city, and that South L.A. has serious problems. South L.A. is overwhelmingly African-American and Latino, and I want to mention just one social problem, and that is foster care. 80% of the kids in our county who are removed from home and placed in foster care are from South L.A. The rippling effect of this one problem on social service delivery, housing, job creation is devastating. But the area with all these kids is excluded. You know, for the last few years, we've heard a lot of rhetoric about bringing our city together, and many of us work to bring our city together on a day-to-day basis. The Community Coalition is an African-American and Latino organization, and frankly, a decision like this undermines our effort to build the unity between our people. How do we explain this to the people who live and work in South L.A.? This decision needs to be corrected. It was a mistake, and I call on the Council President to correct this mistake, and I call on Councilman Joel Wax to step down. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyrone Anthony Ray?
Hello, council. My name is Tyrone Roy. Obviously, I'm going to be an underdog here. But I was here when the council voted in the new president, and the vote was nine to five. It was done in a democratic fashion. And council has a prerogative to assign whomever he wants, whomever he wants, to the committees that he wishes, and I back that issue. But what I'd really like to say is that the South Central 8th, 9th, and 10th District has been plagued with housing shortages and lack of jobs. And throughout this time, that the councilmen have been on the ones in question, except for Ms. Jan Perry, has been in office, and it's booming economy, and we still haven't gotten anything. And I say that I don't care what color an individual is, if he can get some things done, get them done, but these gentlemen, without attempting to denigrate their service to the city, have not, obviously, impacted these issues in this booming economy. And I say, let someone else come in now, and let someone else see what they can do to handle this job. But these guys are on their way out, and they still haven't done anything. And I applaud whoever is in the Housing Department, and whoever is in Job Development, as long as they get the job done. Everyone, really, in South Central applauded Kenneth Han. He was not an African-American. He got things done. So I just want to see someone in there who can get the job done, period.
Thank you. We'll have Mark Lewis. Next will be Jim McQuiston, Nathaniel Robertson, and Willis Edwards.
Hello, my name is Mark Lewis. I work for Ward EDC, a nonprofit organization. I'm a job developer. Some of the councilpeople might know me, because I work at Chesterfield Square, and I just basically want to talk about jobs. I just basically want to talk about jobs. And what I feel for is the jobs concerned and how they divvied up the committees. I feel we have to be reflected in the communities, the community, not so much our black or white thing. But Mark Ridley-Thomas, I used to campaign for him. I campaigned for Jane Perry. I remember when I was little, living on houses, seeing Nate Holden walking around the community and what have not. They are a reflection of our community and what we want in our community. I want him to take a look at what he did and see that either they can work with the committees, or either they need to be appointed to some of the committees, one of them or two of them. I don't really care how he does it, but if he doesn't do it, there will be meetings like this on a continuous basis, because we're not going to take it. We have to be reflected. And that's it.
Jim McQuiston?
I'm Jim McQuiston, representing the East Hollywood Community Association. First of all, I want to congratulate the President on his committee assignments. As an MNT graduate, I'm a Caltech graduate. We kind of think alike, I guess. I'm sorry that Mr. Garcetti didn't get on the Plum Committee, but I am very, very enthusiastic about his choices of committee assignments. And I think the council will work very well that way. But what I really want to say is what's coming up tomorrow, and I can't be here tomorrow. The framework is what we're all talking about here, under the cover. If the framework says that South LA is going to be black, and Central LA is going to be brown, and West LA is going to be white, and the Valley is going to be white, then we haven't gotten anywhere in our civil rights. And that is exactly what it says. I don't think anybody on the council wants to get into that position. It's just maybe we techies look at these things a little bit closer. If we get that framework organized properly, I think a lot of our problems in South LA, in Central LA, and in Western LA are going to disappear as long as we work on it. And it's a hard job. And I congratulate Mr. Burnson on starting the framework in motion. But unfortunately, the framework right now, dependent on existing transportation, is de facto segregation. And we don't want that in Los Angeles. And these people that have talked to us before on this council have talked about segregation. We don't want pockets of poverty in this town. And the transportation is organized to keep the pockets of poverty in place. So let's work on that framework. I can't be here tomorrow, and it probably won't be open for public discussion tomorrow. I think we really should do a little bit more work on it. Look at the housing element. The housing element says, "South LA is black, the Central LA is brown, and the Western LA is white." And when I read that, I was shocked, because in this town, we don't really want to think that way. And that's what came out of our planning department. If we plan properly, we will really make this town come alive. And if we don't plan properly on this framework, we are going to be in deep trouble, both in the federal courts and in our own, really, minds. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathaniel Robertson, Willis Edwards, and Jackie DePont-Walker.
Yes, hello, my name is Nathaniel Robertson. I just have three questions for the council, please. Why Padilla chose to look over blacks in key committees? I've read in Los Angeles Times that Padilla understands, but has not taken action. And I'd like to know, when is he planning on taking action and what has he come up with? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Willis Edwards, Jackie DePont-Walker, Audrey Quarles.
I'm Dr. Geraldine R. Washington, President of the Los Angeles NAACP, and I do have a card in to speak. Standing with me is Willis Edwards, who is a member of the National Board for the NAACP. And we are here because of concern that perhaps we might need to change the direction that we have started in for this new administration. We believe that Los Angeles has an opportunity to really enforce and demonstrate the vision that our founding fathers had, and that is representation. Willis and I are going to take turns here, so.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Okay. Madam President, we're happy to be here today. We thought that we didn't have to come to City Council for this reason. We thought we were going to come for a joyous reason. But when there's economic racism in our community, we feel that we must take a stand. And we are asking and calling on the President of the City Council to reconsider his appointments and appoint someone from the 8th, 9th, or the 10th District to these committees, and we hope that he will follow suit.
We also want you to know that we love this city of Los Angeles. We believe that the strength of this city is in its diversity. And there are many of us who have worked time and time and time again to bring the city together. We do believe that if there is no correction or a change of direction, that we will lose ground. Because I often say that wherever we are going, if we are going to have a positive experience, we must all go together. And for the residents of the 8th, 9th, and 10th Council Districts, that will mean that our voices will not be heard through our city council people. So, Mr. President of the City Council, we do ask your consideration. And again, we love this city, and we want to see it function at its best.
Thank you. Jackie DePont-Walker, Audrey Quarles, Marguerite Boggs.
Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Padilla, members of the City Council, especially my former Charter Commission members, council members Ridley-Thomas, Perry, and Holden. This morning is a very difficult time for me, because I had hoped, with the new faces and the new election, there will be new behavior in City Council. I am very concerned that it happens that the members serving the 8th, 9th, and 10th Districts are African-American, but they find themselves cut out of key committees. It is very important to the members of the community where I live and where I serve, that we be represented where resources can be allocated. When we sat on the Charter Commission for eighteen grueling months, we said we wanted things to be different. We said to council members on the other side, "We want you to think about the entire community." It is a very sad state that we find ourselves with no seat at critical tables. And so I say to you, Mr. Padilla, we are here to say we need a seat at the table. No one can state our case better than the people we voted for and who we elected to speak for us. One of my colleagues says always, "Watch out for Jackie, she'll pray for you." Yes, indeed, I will. I tell you that I learned the best politics at my father's feet in the AME Church. I tell you that we stand for all of the oppressed and disenfranchised. I tell you that it's not an addendum to already crowded agenda, it's who we are. And so the community that you see here did not have 48 hours, did not have 72 hours, and less than 24 hours, we understood why we needed to be here. We need a reconsideration. We need a seat at the table.
Audrey Quarles, Marguerite Boggs, and Reverend Norman Johnson.
Mr. President, partnership is what we need. I was reading, I saw President Padilla, Pro Tem Mark Ridley-Thomas, and Cindy Miskaroski, I guess. And I would like to know if the three of you were together in making these appointments. I feel that we have, we do not have a seat at the table. And if you had partnership, we would have a seat at the table. And last but not least, I loved what the, let's see, the fellow that did the prayer this morning. He told that he was right on target. And so I hope that, I know that the prayer, this whole meeting will be aired, I hope that the prayer is aired also. And I do hope that we will seek partnership and that we will have representation with taxation. At the present, we have taxation without representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Marguerite Boggs and Reverend Norman Johnson? Is Margaret Boggs here? If not, Reverend Johnston?
My name is Reverend Norman Johnson, and we join with others in addressing the City Council President, Mr. Padilla, and council members on the issue of the appointments. And we, a group of concerned clergy representing churches in the 8th, 9th, and 10th Council Districts, are here today to register our protest at the exclusion of our elected representatives from the Economic Development and Employment Committee, as well as the Housing and Community Development Committee. We are well aware that these two committees exert tremendous influence in decision-making and regarding economic development projects, housing, and social services programs. Council members Mark Ridley-Thomas, Jan Perry, and Nate Holden represent 750,000 constituents. To exclude these elected officials is to effectively marginalize a significant portion of the city. And as you've heard this morning, it also stigmatizes them, as the question is raised of their effectiveness. Subjecting South and South Central Los Angeles constituents to lame duck leadership, and Mr. Wax, we love you and appreciate you, but lame duck leadership, when full-term council leadership is available, goes against the very foundation of the City Council as a servant of this community. We urge, in the strongest possible terms, reconsideration of the committee appointments. We reject the suggestion that expanding the committees is a means of addressing this issue. Such expansion would suggest accommodation, but misses the central point. Expansion should be the result of necessity and not accommodation. We look forward to working with all members of the City Council for the mutual interests of Los Angeles. However, we accept nothing less than having our elected leadership and constituents of the 8th, 9th, and 10th Districts fully empowered to participate in policymaking and resource allocation. Economic development, social services, housing, and community development are very important in the South and South Central parts of the city. These are areas where the needs are great, and the lack of representation is inconceivable, given the immense needs that exist. Los Angeles is a diverse city that is struggling to maintain equally diverse, an equally diverse landscape among its elected officials. We stress that the City Council representatives of the 8th, 9th, and 10th Districts, Mark Ridley-Thomas, Jan Perry, and Jan Perry and Nate Holden, are positioned to provide the best leadership for these committees, and we hope and trust that this issue will be resolved very quickly.
Thank you, Reverend Johnston. Pastor William D. Smart Jr., Reverend G. Lynn Taylor, and Reverend Richard Daniels.
To the council, my name is William D. Smart Jr., pastor of the Phillips Temple Christian Methodist Episcopal Church, and a member of this fine clergy group. To the President, at your election, can I wait? I would like the President's attention, ma'am. At your election, I was here, and I heard outstanding words emanating from your mouth like "new agenda," intergenerational politics, positive politics, diversity, and a progressive agenda. And then I find out that our three most valuable elected officials in the 8th, 9th, and 10th are excluded from important committees at the table. And my concern then became that your new agenda and your new coalitions evidently does not include African-Americans. For if they did, you would have the sensitivity to know that with the problems that are facing South Central, they need to be at the table to represent us. I think this has been an egregious misrepresentation of political power and authority. And as a voice, as the prophet, the Old Testament prophets, when they went to talk to the king, we have come to talk to the king and ask you to reconsider your thinking and your ways. And because if you don't reconsider, there will be some effects in our community that affects the whole city. We are one city. Everybody needs a place at the table. God bless you.
I'm Reverend G. Lynn Taylor of the Baptist Ministers Conference of Los Angeles. I shall, brother, members of the council, yield my time to Reverend William Campbell.
Thank you very much, Reverend Taylor. Indeed, to the Chair, to President Padilla, to members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, I am the Reverend William Monroe Campbell, pastor-elect of the Mount Gillett Missionary Baptist Church of Los Angeles, and I come today on behalf of the Baptist Ministers Conference of Los Angeles and Southern California. We, the Baptist Ministers Conference of Los Angeles and Southern California, the Reverend L. Daniel Williams, President, are officers and members. Come before you with a grave concern. We have become aware of the reorganization of your council with the appointment of new committees, and it concerns us. More specifically, we are alarmed about the assignments to the Economic Development and Employment Committee, and the Housing and Community Development Committee, and the utter exclusion of representation of Council Districts 8, 9, and 10. This is not a matter of politics. It is a matter of service to the city and the exclusion of combined areas that are most critically impacted by the issues of economic development, employment, housing, and community services. To absent our community from a voice in the area that is of most importance to us is a virtual act of disenfranchisement. It has further come to our attention that as this matter was addressed last week, you produced persons who spoke of how kind, fair, and reputable you are as a person. Mr. President, the issue is not your personal traits. It is the exclusion of a broad area of the city that very much needs to have presence and voice in the committee decision-making process of the city through the City Council. The recent charter changes have given particular attention to the matter of neighborhoods. To completely exclude a broadly-defined neighborhood from the City Council Committee that deal with issues so central to the interests of those neighborhoods is egregious, to say the least. Furthermore, when the President comes from an area that has pressed forward in a secessionist movement because of the sentiment of exclusion, it borders on insult to the community to presume that he does not recognize that more than political patronage is at stake. We therefore urge you, Mr. President, to reconsider your appointments and recognize that as leader of the council of the entire city of Los Angeles, you must readjust and realign the committees. Finally, in the language of the 1993 United States Supreme Court Shaw versus Reno decision, what you have done is obfuscated and complete community of interest. I have found you to be an honorable person, and I know that you're big enough to make the changes necessary, because it's for the good, and because you are truly an honorable person. Thank you.
I am Reverend Richard Daniels, pastor of the Friendly Friendship Baptist Church, and a member of this conference. To the honorable members of the council, the President...
To the honorable members of the council, the president, we feel as a body of prophets that we should offer a word of prayer at this moment. Would you bow with me, please? Oh, God, our help in ages past, and the only hope we have in the unknown ages that are to come, how grateful we are for the present privilege to pray. By your own gracious design, you have made prayer the means for mere mortals to gain the attention of heaven. And oh, how we need your attention. But before we lay our burdens, concerns, and desires at your feet, we worship you for your goodness, power, immutability, grace, and sovereignty. For you are the high and lofty one who inhabits eternity. By your graces, we are delivered; by your mercies, we are sustained; by your love, we are constrained. Thank you for every act of kindness toward us. Yet while refreshing showers of your blessings upon the just and the unjust, there are desolate and dry places, troubling and disturbing conditions, and challenging and new vistas facing us. We admit our helplessness while we avail ourselves for your use. So we come to you in prayer, and our requests are many. We have come to such a time as this, for there is change in leadership in our city, change of design and purpose laid before this city. And oh, God, guide the mayor and this council, this president. Uphold the weak of this city. Deliver the depressed of this city. Constrain the evil in this city, and bless the souls of this city. Let your light of wisdom prevail upon the council of this city, Los Angeles. Give us reason for courage by your presence and reason for hope through your peace. Rock of ages, cleft for us, shield us, so that your glory, power, and purpose are fulfilled in every way. In the name of our Lord and our Christ, we pray. Amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We will now hear from the Reverend Alta Gracia Perez, followed by Emma Louise Jessie, Ms. Eunice M. Thomas, in that order, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council and especially the president. My name is the Reverend Alta Gracia Perez, and I am director of St. Phillips Episcopal Church, which is in the 9th District. I'm a member of Coalition LA, the organization that works around the city, but I'm especially a member of the 10th District. And I've had the privilege to learn and work from many of the community leaders in the 8th. And my concern is that what inspires me to do the work that I do both in my job and in this city, what makes this city an exciting place to live, is the fact that whether the rest of the country likes it or not, we are on the cutting edge. We are already living what the rest of the country will live. And it's very exciting, but like any change and any new thing, it is scary. I was very excited when the council was elected, lots of new faces, lots of younger faces, and that was wonderful. But the temptation is always, when you're not as experienced, or when you haven't been around, or when you just got there after a long time of not being there, is to do what has always been done. And my hope for this council and for the president is that we will not do politics as usual, because where we're moving as a nation and as a city cannot afford it. We have to work together. Both in my parish and in my community work, I do lots of work building coalitions. And it's always true that the people lead and the leaders follow. And so I ask for you to follow not only the work that I do and the work that all of these people represent, but all the folks that couldn't take off from work to come. All the work that they're doing in their neighborhoods to bring people together, black, brown, yellow, white, and for you to follow in that same spirit. These committee appointments have to reflect the communities that are affected. That's part of the voice that must be present to make wise decisions. And I know that this is only a temporary thing, because I'm joining my sister Dupont Walker, and I'm offering the worst threat I can offer you. I will pray for you. And I know that this will change, because we are moving forward. We will not go back.
Thank you very much for your testimony. The next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Emma Louise Jessie, and I only have a very few words to say.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm very unhappy that the 8th, 9th, and 10th District is not represented on the key issue. Please, please make this right.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next speaker, please.
My name is Eunice Thomas. I live in the 8th District. Councilman Ridley Thomas is my representative. We feel that we should have, not only for the 8th District, the 9th, and the 10th, a voice for the little people like me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pat Lewis, Barbara Rooks, Eva Strades, Najee Ali, Leon Galette, in that order, please. May I suggest to you that we have several persons wishing to be heard in the balance, and so if you would be mindful of that as you come forward, we'd be quite appreciative. Ma'am, please come forward.
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Barbara Rooks. I'm here alone with other seniors to appeal to you for the following services. One of our major concerns is the need for Section 8 in our building. It is shameful that we, as being senior citizens on fixed income, do not have this available to us. The complex that we reside in does qualify as a low-income tenement. Every one of us automatically qualifies for this government-sponsored program. In addition to this, our seniors are living longer today than they have in recent years. Therefore, housing is more, housing that is more spacious is needed. It would be ethically and financially sound for the city of Los Angeles to build spacious housing for the elderly. An apartment they would be able to not only move about in, but they would also have room enough for all of their items. Instead of building little cubicles that isn't enough to store one room of furniture. And social services is something else that we would like to have, and is urgently needed for those of us who could help with our paperwork, also with health questions that we do not understand. We feel these services would be readily available to us on-site. In addition, we are in need of nursing service, which is a serious concern and greatly needed to care for those who require medical attention on an ongoing base. There are so many seniors who could use an on-site nurse to help with their medical problems. I am here appealing to you, the council members, for all the seniors in the greater Los Angeles area. We would appreciate your cooperation with these concerns. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Eva Strader. I'm a resident of the Wardsville Senior Housing, and I am very unhappy about the situation that the 8th, 9th, and 10th District has existed. So please, please give that some good consideration. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Najee Ali, Executive Director of Project Islamic Hope. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak before the City Council. And a lot of things have already been said that I was going to say, but I will just say this, and I'll get straight to the point. My comments will be directed at Councilman Padilla. First met you a couple of years ago when we fasted together in support of janitors who were striking at USC. And I was just so impressed with your sincerity and your being out there on the front lines with other activists and religious leaders. And I follow your career since, and I have been impressed by your wisdom, your integrity, and your leadership. But I can say, after seeing the committee assignments that you have, I guess, put forth, I'm just disappointed, because I think it's a collective slap in the face of the 8th District, the 9th District, and the 10th District, and those constituents, because I don't think it's racial, I just think you just made a poor mistake. So I'm asking that you really reconsider those assignments, because we have a lot of problems for our social and economic conditions, and we do need voices at the table to speak for us and represent us. So I'm just hopeful that you will reconsider, because we must work together for unity. And I do want to make sure that everyone understands that we must live and work together. So I'm just hopeful that you will see that you've hurt a lot of residents in those districts. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. President Protem, Ed Turley from Central Recovery Development Project, speaking on behalf of Leon Galette. I wanted to voice my concern this morning for the committee assignments that we feel that don't fairly represent the problems in our community. We need persons in our community who are sensitive to the needs of South Central, particularly the 8th, 9th, 10th City Council Districts. Those are areas that are among the most underserved communities in our district, particularly the 9th. And they have social and economic concerns that the City Council persons that we elected and helped to elect must be present to represent us, so that we can get the resources we need to address the gang problems, the social and economic problems, the drug problems, the crime problems. And we urge that you seriously reconsider your decisions for these committee assignments. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is, I will exhaust the list at this point, David Louie, Leonard Shapiro, Juanita Tate, Solomon Rivetta, Richard Marshall, Ted Hayes, Tim Watkins, R.W. Akil, Alan Crabbe, Jim Clark, Maureen Murfree, and Sabrina David. All persons whose names were called, please come forward. And the final speaker is Victor Namius. If you would please come to the microphone and be prepared to give your testimony, and the last name I call will be the last speaker. Sir, your name?
Good morning. My name is Richard Marshall. I've lived in the 9th Councilmatic District since 1947. I came to the district in 1942 in the United States Navy. I have watched the 9th Councilmatic District deteriorate for 50 years. We seem to have never gotten our just due. And that 9th Council District runs from Main Street to Alameda for our purpose and the freeway on the north. And I'd like to see some changes, and I agree with everyone that's been here so far about what we need. And for us not to have representation on these committees that affect our area is terrible. And I'd like to see this get respect. It's one of the things Black people have had problem in this country, is for us to get respect. And I'm here to see that we get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is David Louie, longtime resident of the city of Los Angeles. Fifteen years in the, excuse me, 25 years in the 10th District, currently residing in the 13th. Proud to say that I've had the opportunity to serve on the Planning Commission under the Bradley Administration. And I come to you this morning as the Chair of the Chinatown Economic Development Council. Our objective, our mission within that organization is the economic revitalization of Chinatown. The recent appointments, though, have brought a great amount of disappointment and disturbance due to the appointments. I would ask that Councilman Padilla reconsider the appointments that he has made. I think the appointments clearly reflect a lack of sensitivity of the needs of those particular communities, and particular turn their back on the decades of experience that those particular leaders have in bringing about revitalization. I will share with Councilman Padilla that specifically the Asian-Pacific community, and I believe the city of Los Angeles in general, is looking with great interest on the skill sets that you bring to this administration. And I would encourage you to follow the path of enlightenment, recognition of needs, sensitivity to the communities that we all serve, and turn your back on political retaliation, lack of sensitivity. And I encourage you to follow the first path. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Juanita Tate. I'm the Executive Director of Concerned Citizens of South Central Los Angeles. And to my council member, Jan Perry, the job not done till the paperwork's finished, you understand that. On August 7, 2001, Los Angeles residents and businesses join, we're joining in City Council today to help look at the representation of the 8th, 9th, and 10th Council Districts as they make their petition for fair representation on the City Council Committees to City Council President Alex Padilla. The City Council President, who publicly says that he wants to be a spokesperson for Inclusive, has implemented a plan that denies representation of these City Council Committees that will control and direct the flow of millions of grand dollars, funds for housing, economic development, and our communities. In a private meeting with Council President Padilla, our City Council Representatives requested to correct the oversight. Unfortunately, the Council President has not seen the merit of their request as yet and has not responded to our community's concerns. We will not sit by and watch the council organize to deny a true voice to over more than 750,000 residents, represented by Councilmember Jan Perry, Ridley Thomas, and Holden, living in the urban core. How can Mayor James Han remove himself from the very people he pledged to support in return for the vote on June 5, 2001? The mayor must come forward and explain his statement to the LA Times, where he praised Padilla's council appointment, saying, "A new organization paves the way for meaningful change in how city government operates." We know that our communities in the 8th, 9th, and 10th District have been victims of neglect from the past eight years of administration. We know that these communities are home to low-income Asians, African-Americans, Latin Asians, and Anglos, residents who struggle to maintain their neighborhood when all around them, the resources were being redirected toward big business and big egos. We must ask how a new organization that excludes the representatives of the three most impacted communities can really pave the way for meaningful change for the better. We also have heard that the lack of access to spreading throughout the city at the small business community may soon be excluded from seeking opportunities, which the city, by the creation of a preferred vendors list. If this is true, how can we expect to protect our rights when we are denied a seat on the City Council Committees that will improve the challenge and challenge policies such as these? It's hard to be counted if you're not in a picture. Is this taxation without representation? Where is the diversity? I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Steamed Council Members, my name is Solomon Rivera. I'm the Associate Director of the Community Coalition in South Los Angeles. My comments will be brief, but I would ask that you reciprocate, that the leadership of this body be timely and expeditious in its response to all the voices you're hearing here today. People are outraged. People want to hear a response to what they're saying. In one fell swoop last week, 750,000 residents of this city had their elected leadership marginalized on the issues that most affect them. That's clearly unacceptable. Just a few short decades ago, the body in this room upheld racial covenants and redlining. We've come away since then. I'd like to think, the people in this room would like to think, but they want to see it proven. As we move forward in this new era in the council, in this new millennium, let's not take one step back as we take two steps forward. We are demanding a quick response. I think within a week or two, there should be a public discussion here of solutions as revisiting the role of the 2nd District Council Member on key committees, if he's on his way out later this year. The things that have been raised publicly as options, such as adding council members on key committees on the areas most affected by issues like housing, employment, business creation, these things need to be brought back to the people of this city, to the people most affected by these issues immediately. Part of effective leadership is acknowledging when mistakes are made and working to find solutions and moving forward with the people of the city on those solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next two speakers, please.
Good morning, Council members. My name is Marvin Murphy. I'm a student of the L.A. Unified School District, and I hope you guys just set an example for me to follow.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Tim Watkins. I'm a resident of the South Central Community of Watts, and I'm not here representing anyone other than myself today. In the work that I do, I'm the CEO of the Watts Labor Community Action Committee, which does have an obligation to represent the interests of thousands of people that live in homes that we manage and work in the programs that we operate, oftentimes on the behalf of you as our client. The problem today is this young man, that I see that we've made a grave mistake as we move forward and that we forget what we're supposed to be doing here as adults, that every day and every night somewhere in our city, we're losing one of our youngsters or more to some form of violence as we talk to them about being peaceful and getting along and becoming united and, you know, black and brown and all of the things that we talk about to show examples of unity. And so today, what I came to encourage you to do is to show a sense of balance in your leadership and in the way that you allocate the authority that helps address the needs and issues of the residents of our community in a way that these youngsters can follow as an example. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, let me just say, I see the names of Leonard Shapiro. As Leonard, the persons who'll be recognized are those whose names are being called Leonard Shapiro. Ted Hayes, please come forward. R.W. Akil, Alan Crabbe, Jim Clark, Sabrina David, and Victor Namius, in that order. And that concludes the list.
Good morning, City Council, Mr. President, President Alex Padilla. I would suggest to you, sir, just add some members to your committee. There's no need for me to talk about everything that everybody's here said today. I think the wisest thing for you to do, because you've put your foot in some defecation, it's hard to get it out right now, but I think that the best way for you to get out of this is just add some members to your committees, especially Jan Perry.
That's right.
You know, Jan, the 9th District, she has the highest rate of homeless people in Los Angeles, in the whole Western world, the United States. She should be on that Economic Development Committee especially, because if we can't fix this mess right here in the heart of the city, you can forget about everything else. I believe that L.A. is poised to become a Renaissance city for the whole 21st century. And sir, I'm really, I like you. I think, I'm so proud of you at 28, and that's fantastic, brother. And I think that you can do a good job of leading us in that direction. If you just add Jan and some of these folks to the committee.
There you go.
And I think that'll solve the whole problem. Don't you think so?
For Jan.
And all the women too as well, okay? So thank you. And I want to give my time to Dick Alexander from here. Thank you. I gotta go.
Love you, Dan. Come on, Dan.
I'm Adjoa Yamiche, President of Black Employees Association, representing members in the 8th, 9th, and 10th District, as well as all the districts. And I'm just here to say to you that what is happening to me is happening to you, and what is happening to you is happening to me. Therefore, whatever you do will affect you as much as it affects me. And know that as long as you stand in integrity and you do the right thing and you make sure that what is coming forth is for the good of all concerned, then we've got your back. But the moment that we believe that you are not standing in the interests of all of us, then we will have to take the proper actions. And so I say to you, to let's just remember that what you put forth will always come back to you. It'll always show up in your face as your experience. So just do the right thing. It's in your heart, it's in your mind, that's how you were created. And know that if you represent everybody, then everybody will represent you. And that's what we're asking for, that's what we are demanding. Thank you.
All right, brother Akil.
Councilman Padilla has made a decision that left unchanged, left unchanged reflects the whole-hum attitude and the old-boy school of thinking. And if anything, we reflect, we do reflect that we will respond to that type of attitude. If we perceive that, then we will respond in kind, as the sister just previously stated. Housing, economic development, employment development are concerns that definitely confront us in our communities each and every day. Jan Perry, Councilwoman Jan Perry, Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas, Councilman Nate Holden have been dealing with this for a long period of time. I would urge you to, in this instance, I ask you to take deference as they're juniors. You are in the senior position in terms of President of the City Council, but do reflect their experience, do reflect their need to address their constituents' concerns. It is for them to do. And don't put that responsibility on your shoulders that you put somebody else in place to do that for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm taking a little bit of this time, Mark.
We're going to proceed, sir.
You know, if this thing continues, what's going to end up happening is that, as a result of the phone call I got to encourage me, is that the national organization of women are going to be involved with this because of women were left off. The West Side Jewish women's groups are going to be involved with this in terms of this message if this thing is not resolved. I would recommend that it be resolved so that we don't have a full-scale civil rights movement joined by women's groups, West Side Jewish groups, who are outraged at the elimination and exclusion of women as well. Thank you very much.
All right. Now, let me ask that Alan Crabbe come forward, Jim Clark, Jim Sealy, Sabrina David, and Victor Namius, in that order, please.
Yes, my name is Alan Crabbe. I'm the Vice President, Executive Director of the Vermont Village Community Development Corporation slash Crenshaw Christian Center. President Padilla, I just think it would be, I think it'd be derelict in your responsibility as President if you don't reconsider your appointment of these board members. The Economic Development Affairs in Southern South L.A. have taken on great strides with the support of the Jan Perrys, the Councilman Mark Ridley Thomases, the Councilman Nate Holden. They have a passion, they have a heart for the community. They've shown it in their track record. To dismiss them or to exclude them from these committees, again, as I like to reiterate, would be derelict upon your responsibility as President. Let me reflect back a second, and I'll be very brief. Some of you may recall this past season, you know, Kobe Bryant thought he was the man, and he thought he could take the Lakers to the promised land. He fessed up and admitted that he made a mistake. What did that bring the Lakers? Another championship. All I ask you to do is reconsider your appointment, because we're dealing with people who have a passion and a heart for the community. Thank you very much, President.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Sir, come forward.
Reading Mr. Clark's statement on behalf of the Southern California Chapter of Americans for Democratic Action. You are the first council elected in a new century, the first council to preside over a city that has no majority. You're elected to serve a city in which we are all minorities and in which we'll have to work together with mutual respect if we want a melting pot and if we want to avoid a meltdown into feuds and factionalism. ADA is dismayed that the first actions taken by this council of the new century appear to have violated a cardinal rule of pluralistic society, that every ethnic group deserves at least a voice on anybody that regulates their vital interests. While we are confident that no one on the council acted out of prejudice or racial animus, the reasoning behind individual committee assignments is less important than the representativeness in committee rosters as a whole at the end of the day. We would urge the council to correct its course and steer toward more balanced committee composition. If Councilman Wax were to step aside now from assignments he can hold for only a few months, such a statesman-like gesture could provide for a resolution. This city of minorities has major problems on its agenda, Mr. President. Let's move forward to deal with them with input from all.
Thank you. Sir?
Good morning, Mr. President, Council members. Let me first say how nice it is to see you all back in this magnificent room. It's been a long time coming, and it's a welcome change. My name is Victor Namius. I live and work in Camilla Woods, one of the neighborhoods south of the 10th freeway and one of the neighborhoods affected by these committee selections. It's been my privilege over the last 10 years to work with Mark Ridley Thomas in the 8th District of Paramount Congress, both on the, in the Congress as a chairperson and on the Economic Development Council as a member. We've been able to participate in the growing renaissance and community development of our communities. We felt that we hoped that with the new mayor and with the new council, that there would be new ways of doing business. And we are very concerned that this might be a reflection of the old ways of doing business, and we seek to see it changed. We are concerned whether by design or by chance that there is no voice on either the Development Council, Economic Development Council, or Community Development Council from the 8th, the 9th, or the 10th Districts. We would like to urge you strongly to take this, to correct this oversight, to rectify it now, and to put our representatives back in both of these committees. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Members of the council, that does conclude the public comment portion of our meeting. And we wish to thank all who came today to speak on public comment. Now, Mr. Clerk, what's the next order of business?
Item number 23, a request from Council District 8 to continue that matter until September 19th.
Sorted. Mr. President? Chair recognizes Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. And just wanted to make a few comments, because there's clearly many, many people who took time to join us this morning in City Council. And although I can't answer all of their questions or respond to all of their comments here in this forum and setting, I do want to thank them for having come down here. And I want you to know that I have heard you. Conversations began last week between Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Holden, Councilmember Ridley Thomas, and myself. And particularly with the meeting that we had last Friday, I believe, was a very good first step, and I look forward to continuing those conversations. I agree with you that a resolution of some sort sooner rather than later is preferred. But at minimum, I wanted to thank you for coming down here, to thank you for your comments. You were very eloquent. And I want to thank you for your prayers, for those who offered them, and whether or not I'm going to accept them, some of you are going to pray for me anyway, and I thank you for that, because I do need them. Wanted to mention a couple of things, because a couple of particular concerns stand out and I believe should be responded to immediately. I read in one of the articles, it wasn't mentioned today, but I read in one of the articles, that one of the concerns is that certain funding or certain resources are going to be put at risk. I don't think you should worry about that, not only because of me, but because of other committee members, because of other chairmanships throughout the committee structure that we put in place. You know, we have committees that, for the most part, are committees of three, so it's impossible for all of us to work on every single committee. And I would argue that every single committee is important. And so you're right, not only because it came from pastors or churches or anybody, the desire and the spirit of working together, we are mandated to work together. And I call upon every single member of the City Council to recognize our responsibility in doing so. I've once again offered to be flexible in my schedule, to once again sit with the council members that represent the districts that you are most concerned about, and I hope we can do that immediately after this meeting again. But I also want to extend an invitation to you all. I'm more than happy to sit and meet and talk with any of you as our mutual schedules allow. I want to invite myself to South Los Angeles, not just for the purposes of getting to know your community more, I've been there a couple of times, but also to allow you to get to know me, because over the next several years, we're going to be working together, and I think we should get to know each other. So I want to offer that as well. But again, I want to thank you for coming down here. I know it's difficult to come down during the week, during the day, remind you or let you know that, yes, your voice was heard, I have heard you, and to pledge to you that we will be working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
I simply wanted to, Mr. President and colleagues, there was a question regarding who represented CD 14. So obviously, that was a question that someone had raised in the group. I am the representative for CD 14. My name is Nick Pacheco. I am the current Chair of the Housing and Community Redevelopment Committee, and I do want to share with you that in the last two years that I have been chairing this committee, that we have worked very hard to push all the projects out of CD 8, CD 9, and CD 10. And if you look at some of the projects, whether it be Chesterfield Square, Santa Barbara Plaza, many of these projects were brought to us by these elected officials, and some of them even asked us to waive these projects out of the committee and bring them straight to the council so that they can speak to them directly here on this floor, because ultimately, all projects end up here, and they are at the table here. So I do want to share with you that, as a Latino, as a person who chaired the committee for the last two years, I have supported even a project in CD 9 where the development in downtown was going to bring close to $7 million of affordable housing to south of the 10th freeway. So we are very supportive. I am working very hard to make sure that these issues are addressed. There are many committees that we don't sit on, that where our projects are done. I have worked on Ascot Park, which is a major project, and I'm not on Arts, Health, and Humanities. I've worked on El Mercado, which is a major project in my community. I'm not on Plum. I've worked on the paid toilets, the public paid toilets, and that was a major project, and I'm not on Public Works. I work on El Pueblo, which is in my district, and we've got major steps forward, and I'm not on Arts, Health, and Humanities. I just want to reassure you that under my chairmanship, and I believe the same will occur under Councilmember Garcetti's chairmanship, that we are very much trying to make every council member successful in their districts, and no resources are going to be at risk now, or in the past, or in the future. I can tell you that based on the experience I've had the last two years.
Mr. Holden?
Previous question. Ms. Perry requests to speak.
Thank you very much, Council President. I also wanted to stand and thank all of you for coming here today and taking time out of your schedule. I've said many times, I'm the beneficiary of the teachings of much older people. I think when you get older, you become more liberated, and you speak, you speak the truth, you speak candidly, but you speak it, and you say it with love and compassion and passion. And I have to be grateful for those teachings, because we can't forget why we were sent here. We talk about neighborhood councils and empowering our communities. All of those people who are in our communities, everyone and every interest, then we must be compelled to hear your words and implement them into reality. This is about money, money and resources, and moving money through our communities for all people. That's all it's about. It's not about anything else other than money. Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, next order of business.
Item number 24, a request that matter be referred back to the Housing Department?
Mr. President?
Ms. Miskowski?
I would like to ask if we could take item 37 out of the order. I just had a request from the mayor's office, 37.
Okay, we'll take item 37 out of order, but first of all, there is a request to continue item number 24 or to remand? Remand it back to the Housing Department. Request to remand item number 24, colleagues, without objection, to the Housing Department? Request to remand item number 24, colleagues, without objection, to the Housing Department? Before we go through the balance of the agenda, let's take up item 37. Clerk, would you explain what that item is?
Mr. President, item 37 is a resolution that was worked on with the city attorney's office. It involves LAFCO. Last week, LAFCO submitted a draft schedule for a projected timeline. Included in that schedule is a submittal of a draft of the fiscal analysis to the controller. That is something the city had requested. The problem is that later on in the schedule, a actually comprehensive fiscal analysis will be prepared, and the comprehensive final one is not being sent to the controller in this draft timeline. And the city attorney, in discussion with the mayor's office, has felt that it would be appropriate to ask LAFCO to change the schedule so that the comprehensive fiscal analysis, that is the final one, is the one that goes to the controller and not a draft. So I have a substitute. I'd like to move the substitute motion, item 37, which asks that the mayor, if we adopt this resolution here by request, that LAFCO make that adjustment in the schedule, and we have a letter from the city attorney explaining that. So I would like to move item 37A, the substitute.
Thank you, Ms. Miskowski. Colleagues, we have a substitute motion, item 37A, before us. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll on the substitute motion. Before we close the roll, there is a card on this item. So let's take public comment on this item. Jim McQuiston, to be followed by Leonard Shapiro.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. We're intimately involved in the LAFCO procedure. We support Cindy's motion, but we also notice that there is no room for any changes after any public comment in this. There is more problems with the LAFCO time schedule than meets the eye. But the motion is very well placed, and I would certainly like to see, for example, if you all do not have this schedule, and I have it before me unfortunately, but they have hearings, and then there's no, actually, they're taking protest hearings, and there's nothing to be done after the protest hearings. So there is a lot more problem with this time schedule than just the one problem with the state.
Thank you. Mr. Shapiro? Mr. Shapiro gone once, gone twice. This closes the public hearing. Ms. Miskowski, do you wish to speak again?
Just let me suggest to Mr. McQuiston and others that I concur that there may be other elements of the timeline that the public wants to address, and that it's going to be before LAFCO. The one issue that we had raised is a legal concern because the city will have to pay for the controller's review, and we just wanted to make sure that fiscally it was the final analysis that went forward. I don't think that that should preclude any member of the public from going to LAFCO and asking them for other alterations in the timeline that suits them in terms of public participation. So again, I move 37A.
Thank you. Once again, colleagues, item 37A, substitute motion before us. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 37A is approved.
Forthwith.
Forthwith on that, another request to take item 39 out of order. That is in ordinance. We have 12 members present, without objection. Item number 39, please. Any members wishing to speak on item 39? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. We'll send that one forthwith as well. Next item, Mr. Clerk. Mr. President, brings you back to items number 1 through 3, which are items noticed for public hearing. Colleagues, items 1 through 3 are before us. No request from members of the public to speak on items 1 through 3. Any members wishing to speak on items 1 through 3? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Items 1 through 3 are approved. Next item, please. Mr. President, items number 4 through 18 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a amending motion for 16A that has been distributed. Items 4 through 18, amending motion for 16A? Correct. Any members wishing to speak on item 16? Let's call that special. How's that?
I just want to just amend it, and we can move it forward if you like.
Okay, Mr. Holden?
Well, I'd amend this before your 16A, and I'd like to exclude G from 16A, omit G, and also include that we have to, after the city attorney drafts an ordinance in order to adopt this.
Okay. Mr. Garcetti, on item number 16 or a different item?
16, yeah. Can we call it special?
Let's call 16 special. There's multiple requests to speak on that item. Same for you, Ms. Miskowski. Colleagues, any other specials? Seeing none, items 4 through 18 are before us. Mr. Clerk, you needed a motion on one of them? Just item number 16. Okay, well, it was called special. So let's open the roll on items 4 through 15, 17, and 18. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please. Item numbers 19 through 38, with the exceptions of 23 and 24 and 37, are items for which public hearings have not been held. We do have a comment card on item 36. Let's call that special. Colleagues, any other specials? Mr. Weiss?
I was going to move to continue item 36 so that Mr. Zine could be present until August 17, but if we have a comment card, I would prefer to hold the public hearing then.
Well, the public comment card has been submitted by Mr. Shapiro, who was absent the last time we requested him to speak.
Okay.
Let's go ahead. You wish to continue this item until when?
August 17, please.
Colleagues, request to continue this item until August 17. Without objection, we shall continue. Next item? We're still on the items 19 through 38, with the exception of 23, 24, 36, and 37. Any other members wishing to speak? Any other specials? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please. Item number 40 on the supplemental agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held. Item number 40 is now before us. Mr. Pacheco?
Ask to continue it one day.
Request to continue item 40 for one day. Anybody else wishing to speak? Then without objection, we will continue item number 40 for one day.
Excuse me, Mr. President, could we reconsider item 18? I think it went through without discussion, and I think that has to be continued because there really isn't a settlement. So how long we continue it? Mr. Attorney, 30 days, 60 days?
I'm talking with Tom Henry. We were talking about September 5.
Can I ask you to?
Okay, I move that item 18 be reconsidered and continue to September 5. They're not prepared to go ahead with anything right now.
Okay. Colleagues, request to reconsider item number 18 and continue to September 11th? 15, or the 5th? September 5th. Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is reconsidered, and without objection, we shall continue until September 5th. Next item, please. Item number 41 on the supplemental agenda is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Colleagues, item number 41 is now before us. I have no cards from members of the public wishing to speak. Any members wishing to speak on item 41? Seeing none, clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Clerk, we have a request to send item number 31 forthwith.
Forthwith, yes.
We shall do that. Next item? Item number 16 called special. Mr. Holden, Mr. Garcetti. Item number 16 has been called special. Public hearing has been held on this item. Colleagues, I do have a couple of cards, but it requires a motion to reopen the public hearing. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti. Move for a five-minute total public hearing for those cards. Colleagues, motion to reopen the public hearing. Without objection, we shall do so. Council calls forward first Mr. Gary Schaffner, to be followed by Ben, is it Doningerk?
I pass.
Mr. Ben Doningerk, I'm trying to read your writing here. You pass as well. Mr. Bob Burke?
Mr. Council President, I'm going to pass it this time. Thank you.
That now closes the public hearing. Mr. Garcetti? Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have staff available just to answer a couple of questions about this? Nobody? Perhaps Councilmember Holden can answer a couple of questions. I was wondering if the, does the applicant pay Operation Clean Sweep directly? Do you know?
Staff, did you hear him say come forward?
I believe Building and Safety is here.
Building and Safety, okay. You know? All right. Good morning. I think it is still morning.
Good morning. Delphia Jones, Operation Clean Sweep.
Great, thank you. So is the applicant paying you directly then for this project?
That hasn't been finally negotiated, but we expect that they will pay the contractor directly.
Okay, all right. And do you think this poses any problems whether or not they can contract with private companies for abatement tasks in general? Or is that something that you think is probably good for the future?
That our community-based organizations contract with a private company?
Yeah. Are we going to allow that, or is it going to go through you?
We don't receive a lot of that, but I think this will provide an enhancement to our community-based organizations. It provides additional funding to them. It also allows them to abate a nuisance that they don't currently abate, namely the placards.
Okay, okay. And can others still apply for the 30-day posting on temporary construction walls even if they can or don't want to engage in graffiti abatement required for long-term postings? Is that still going to be available during this time?
Can the community-based organizations?
Yeah, well, is this going to supplant everything that's there right now, or is this going to be an option for construction sites that are in the district? Or is this going throughout the district?
Dave Keim with Building and Safety's Code Enforcement Bureau. I understand this is going to be an option for all the construction sites in the pilot within Council District 10. Those which have solid construction walls, that is, and only in commercial and industrial zones, I believe, as well.
Just saying, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holden?
She speaks first.
Ms. Miskowski?
Members of the council, I have some concerns about this, even though it is just being suggested as a pilot program in the 10th district. What it is about, members of the council, is more advertising. It's allowing construction walls, those construction walls that we see go up over major projects, particularly when they're solid, in an effort to alleviate graffiti and graffiti in and around the area. It's basically saying that those walls, those new temporary construction walls that sometimes for large projects can be up for a year or two, are now eligible and lawfully able to be advertising sites, new little mini billboards in this area. I had had the concern about whether or not it would go on in a housing site. Building and Safety says it doesn't apply, but I don't see here on the actions in front of us that it wouldn't apply to a residential area because it's not specifically prohibited. We do have a sign task force. I don't know that this has gone to the sign task force, but I am, and granted, all that we're doing right now is suggesting that the departments come back with a pilot program for graffiti abatement. And what the purpose is that those advertising companies, which are going to probably be the advertising companies that we know very well, as they put these signs on these walls, they are going to also be required to contribute to a fund in that community to deal with graffiti in the general area. So again, it's meant to be a balance. But, members of the council, I am getting more and more concerned that we very freely seem to be turning over more and more of our areas that previously were prohibited from advertisement as now advertisement available. It's as if every square foot, every square inch of surface that we have available, clearly the advertising companies and communities want it, it has value to them. But I think we are denigrating our city as a consequence, and so I am very concerned about this, even as a pilot program, into what it is saying and doing that, you know, if there's a surface, come and get it, you can advertise. And I don't think that's the right statement for the City Council to be making.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members of, Ms. Miskowski, how many times have we heard from our constituents that they keep posting these signs on the poles, posting these signs on construction sites anyway? How many times have we heard from our constituents, we are not doing anything about it? And yet, we have a penalty, a fine, we can cite the people who make the posters, the record companies. We've even tried that. In fact, the city attorney then, but not the mayor, and I had a news conference in my district, more than once, pulling down signs off the poles, showing the people through the media that we're trying to do something about it. But it's really out of control. We need help. And Operation Clean Sweep says, hey, any help you can provide, we will take. So I know in my district, we need it. If you want it in your district, fine. But I want to try this. I want the public to know that we're proactive, that we're not reacting to a situation that's been bad in my district and many others for some time. Unacceptable. And so if someone wants to step up to the plate and put up a $10,000 bond, I'll take it. Building and Safety will say, oh, we'll take that bond. Here's what you say you're going to do? Fine. Put the money down, and you're going to clean that site within a one-block square radius around the affected area and maintain it. Those signs will come down off the poles. I don't have to send my staff out there. Building and Safety don't have to send anyone out of the street. It saves the city time and money in the long run. Hopefully, it'll work. If it does, there will be a report. If the report is good, you can adopt it also. But I'm also saying, don't deny the councilperson in the 10th district the opportunity to correct the problem that's been pervasive over the years. Mr. President, members, I ask that we adopt 16A as amended, and we ask that we delete G from the proposed amendment per the city attorney's request, and that we further include that the city attorney should draft an ordinance for the purpose of adopting to implement this program, which is a pilot. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Burnson?
Members of the council, my first reaction was not a favorable one, but I must admit that I looked it over and found out some of the information, and my view has softened a little bit. I don't think there's anybody that's been more concerned about the proliferation of signs in the council, unless maybe it's Cindy. We've been going round and round in our task force for some time and trying to deal with some of these problems. This is a, my understanding is that they can now put up posters by permit on construction sites, but that's only for a 30-day period. Is that correct?
They would be treated as?
Is that correct?
Yes, they can.
Okay. Now, what this basically does is extend this for the duration of the period of time that that temporary wall is up there. Now, the problem with these walls are two things, and you've all seen them. Number one, if they're left alone bare, they're ugly enough as it is. But unfortunately, they become targets for graffiti. They're just open invitations to the graffiti artists to come in and put graffiti on them. And my understanding is that these posters are basically dealing with entertainment. Is that correct? I'm asking the industry. Is that correct? Yes or no? Okay, so they are colorful, and it's a mixed bag. You know, this is not going to apply in every part of the city. It's not going to apply in very many instances because not too many sites in the city at one time are actually boarded up. You've seen them with the walkways that go by the boards. And those are rare and in-between, and they're a problem. So this is a pilot program. It is going to contribute something towards Clean Sweep, which does a good job in eliminating graffiti in our city. And I think the- graffiti in our city, and I think the councilman's entitled to give it a try, and if it doesn't work out, it won't be renewed, and we certainly don't have to have any of it in our district. I would just offer one amendment, and I think Cindy raised that point, and that is that this be restricted from residential areas or areas within a certain distance of residential areas that applies now to our billboard ordinance. And I think, what is that, 500 feet, is that, or what? Yes, we can, Nate, we can do that. It won't hurt it, believe me, if it's in, if it's in commercial and industrial areas, it will not hurt. It's, well, it may be, but they won't be facing it, so it, well, first of all, let me just say, right now, the billboard ordinance merely says facing residential areas. That shouldn't affect anything, any more than a billboard would, you see? So I would like to have that language added. I think that'll protect the neighborhoods, from residential neighborhoods, and I think we should move forward with it, give it a shot, see how it works. The worst that'll happen is it won't be renewed. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Councilmember Holden, would you consider expanding the cleaning of graffiti to three blocks? Is there any reason why it's only one block? I know it's in your district, but when you look at some of these areas where there's constructions going on, the graffiti is really just, it's more than just one block, and it might, it'll make a striking difference. Would you consider that, or is the industry limiting us to one block?
The answer, Mr. Burnson just made a motion to propose an amendment that says included residential area facing residential. And in my area, commercial, industrial, is a mixed bag with residential that you're rather adjacent to, next door is commercial or industrial to residential. I personally don't have any problem with what you suggest. I would hope that it would clean the whole district up, but we want to, you know, but I think I understand the intent of your suggested amendment is to get a broader area as possible. At the same time, we would like to encourage those who are posting the sign to participate in this program, where it's not too costly for them either, because there's a lot of graffiti going up, you know as well as I do, in your district and mine, a lot of signs being posted on telephone poles, where the city's got to take them down. I would try, give me the latitude in a pilot program to suggest to those who post those signs, make it kind of open-ended, instead of one square block, I can say, can you give me two in a specific area? When you identify the specific site or the specific block area that they're going to post those signs, then I can negotiate two, three, four, or five, if at all possible, but at least for a minimum of one and maybe more. And I think that with that kind of latitude, tough negotiation, you can accommodate, that you're gold.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to, I was reminded in this debate of something that Councilmember Reyes spoke about when we talked about the win-first contracts, about the boxes that are going to be in the neighborhoods, and might the vendors here be willing to do something that would either have a portion of the advertising area be either community art or community bulletin board of some sort? Could you describe what that might look like?
We already, on a willingness, on a volunteer basis, in the past, we've been donating 10% of the space for not-for-profit art groups in Los Angeles. We not only provide the space, but we also manufacture the art or the poster, basically because the not-for-profit art groups don't have the amount of money to spend to compete with the major motion picture companies or record companies, and we thought that this was a good way to, for us to keep the community very active and very active in the events that we are posting.
Any further questions? Members, we have item number 16, as amended by Councilmember Holden, before us now. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Did you push the wrong button, Mr. Holden? Forthwith on that item. Next item, please.
Motion's for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
Councilmembers' request for excuse from council attendance. Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on Wednesday, August 8, to leave at 12:30 for city business. This meets policy.
Mr. Pacheco is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused on Friday, November 30 for personal business. This also meets policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
The desk is clear.
That's no closed session today, huh? Colleagues, any adjournment motions? Will everybody please stand? Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of George Beecher. He is the father of friends of my daughter couple, and he was the owner of Beecher Hideaway Resort in Minong, Wisconsin. Survived by his wife Nadine, eight children, Loy, Lauren, Juan, Lori, Lee, Lisa, Les, and Lance. I guess he believes in a lot of L's. And 12 grandchildren. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Thomas will introduce a motion regarding adjournment in favor in memory of Mr. Hayward H. Moore, and then I will second the motion. Mr. Thomas, I yield.
Mr. President, members of the council, would you join us in adjourned in memory of Mr. Hayward H. Moore, a 53-year resident of the 8th Council District, distinguished as a top sales representative for Mother's Cookies, and an active member of the Westminster Presbyterian Church, where he served as an usher, a member of the men's council, and he was chairman of the Board of Trustees. He is survived by his wife Dorothy Jane Davis Moore and three daughters, Yolanda Renee Moore, Yvette Kim Moore, and Yvonne Yelise Moore. Mr. Holden.
Members, that Mr. Moore was also an active member of the Westminster Jefferson Park Housing Corporation, a project to develop low-income housing in the 10th District, in which he was very, very active for the 47 years that he was a member of the church there. So his work is well done, has been well done, and we sorely miss, and we respectfully request that we adjourn in his memory.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, just simply ask that I join in on the adjournment motion for Mr. Moore. He is a friend, or was a friend of one of my staffers, Suzanne Moreau.
Any others? Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.